What the hell is all this?
I see you both there.
No, I have no clue what this is. Huh. Bella.
I have a coin. Is this going to count as a lottery ticket or something?
It's a coin. Okay, well not everyone has one. Not everyone has one of those packets. That's weird. Uh.
Welcome everyone to the next meeting of Greenville City Council. Thank you for being with us. Please rise for imocation.
We already have.
By Mill Pittman, our clerk of council, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
We welcome you to join us. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. Lord, we thank you for our council, for our staff, for our citizens and everyone that makes our our city just a beautiful place to be, Lord, to work, to play, to thrive. Continue to bless them, hold them in your arms, and just continue to bless our city and all that come to this beautiful city of ours, Lord. We just praise you and thank you in your blessed and heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mel. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Yep.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming here. Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow here. Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of April 8th, which will stand approved as listed. Any objections? Seeing none, we move on. We have no one signed up to address city council. We'll keep it that way. Okay.
All right.
All right. We get to take this opportunity to thank some people who really need to be thanked 100 times, which is people who are nice enough to serve on our various boards and commissions tonight. We will do that and then proceed with some new appointments to our boards and commissions. And I will continue. I will pick that up now. And accommodation. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Dow.
Yeah, thank you. On behalf of council, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Kenesha Brantley for her service. Kenesha was associated with the seafood spot, which has closed, and we will miss her on the ATAX committee, and we will miss the seafood spot, too.
Absolutely.
Is she present?
It is. It is my pleasure to thank Adam Schwimmer on behalf of council and Mayor Adam Schwimmer, who served on Arts and Public Places Commission since March 10 of 2013, and also to thank Amanda Bennett, who served on Arts and Public Places since May 1, 2021. We will miss you both. Thank you. Are either one of them here?
No.
Okay. As I was going to say, we invite these, anybody who's here, to please stand, if you will. Next is Historic Review Board, Councilman.
And I'd like to thank Anatoly Upheart, who has served since 2021, May 1, 2021, and Fred Guthier, who serves since July of 2017.
Okay. Planning Commission, Councilman Brisington.
I'd like to thank and recognize Derek Kinderwind, who I don't see in the audience for his service on Planning Commission. I know each member of council joins me in doing so. Derek has served since May of 2021, so we thank you.
And the Springwood Cemetery Advisory Committee.
Mayor and council, I'd like to thank Charlie Bryan and Earl Provost.
Earl Provost here.
Okay.
Please stand.
And they have served since August 1, 2016. That's really, really, really doing a whole lot of work. Thank you so much, very much.
And Mr. Purve was one of the charter members of our Springwood Cemetery Advisory Committee, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very much appreciate that. Now proceed with some new appointments. We have the Arts and Public Places Commission. Congressman Gibson.
It is my great pleasure, and if either of you or any of these persons are here, please stand up. It is my great pleasure to recommend the appointment, the reappointment, rather, of Kate Furman Patterson and Kate Barton Leicher to the Arts and Public Places Commission, each for a three-year term, beginning May 1, 2024, and ending April 30, 2027. I'd also like to recommend the appointment of Jesse Capello Amos and Timothy Cunningham, each for a three-year term, beginning May 1, 2024, and ending April 30, 2027.
Okay. All right. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of these nominees, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay, we thank them. Design Review Board, Councilman DeWorke.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of council, recommend the reappointment of Jeff Tiddy and Katie Skoloff, each for a two-year term, beginning May 1, 2024, and ending April 30, 2026.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes so named. Thank you. Greenville Airport Commission, Councilman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recommend the reappointment of Matthew Alexander to a three-year term, beginning May 1, 2024, and ending April 30, 2027. Matthew has a lot of institutional knowledge for the airport, is a pilot, is a veteran, and is the chair of that commission.
That's right, yeah.
I see.
Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Mr. Alexander, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Historic Review Board, Councilman Stahl.
Yes, I would like to recommend the reappointment of Erin Barr and Laura Godfrey, each for a two-year term, beginning May 1, 2024, and ending April 30, 2026.
Okay, there's so nominated any of the nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Municipal Election Commission, Councilmember Fleming.
I would recommend the reappointment of Marci Hepner to a six-year term, beginning May 21, 2024, and ending April 30, 2030. I'm not sure if Ms. Hepner is here, but if she's not, I'd so move that recommendation.
Okay. Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Planning Commission, Councilman Brisington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend the reappointment of both Michael Martinez, as well as Jeff Randolph, for four-year terms that would expire April 30, 2028. Also like to bring forward the recommendation of Chris Laney to fill an unexpired term, which would be a year from now, expiring April 30, 2025.
Good. All those nominating other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. And the Springwood Cemetery Advisory Committee, Councilmember Fleming.
Yes, sir. I recommend the reappointment of two people, Murphy Armstrong and Mandy Merritt, each for a two-year term, beginning in 2024 and ending April 30, 2026. I'm not sure if either are present. Okay. I would also like to recommend the appointment of Jason Forrester and Kimberly Stegall, each for a two-year term, beginning May 1, 2024, and ending April 30, 2026.
Okay. And then the nominations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. All right. Very good. Thank you, council. We appreciate those willing to serve. We have the consent agenda up front. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Those matters receive second and final reading. Next to the regular agenda, 14A.
An ordinance to amend Section 19-4.6.2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville, vehicular parking, and provide regulations for the parking of recreational vehicles in residential areas.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Yes, Mayor and council, this is a proposed text amendment to our vehicular parking standards for recreational vehicles and travel trailers. And so this would add some standards for their location and where they can be parked on residential properties throughout the city. Not allow them to be connected to utilities or occupied other than for cleaning and maintenance. And then finally, any other applicable laws, like parking in the street or right-of-way, remain in effect as they currently are in the municipal code.
Okay.
Yep. And Mr. Mayor, I have an amendment. I don't know if we want to ask, have questions for Michael, but I have an amendment.
An amendment, okay.
Yes, amendments. And Michael, when you're explaining that, I have visions of Cousin Eddie in my head, so I'll try to, try to get that out of my head.
That's my cousin. His name was Eddie.
I have an amendment for consideration to council. For RVs or travel trailers on residential lots that abut a park or PK district, provide that a type E fence would be required, among other provisions that you have in front of you.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion on his amendment? If not.
Did you do the drawing? Okay.
Clerk will call the roll on the amendment.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, we don't, is that city attorney?
We have a motion and a second to amend, so we need either a roll call or a voice vote on the amendment.
I just, I'd give John a voice.
No, I got you. Is the language that was put on the record, is that sufficient, based upon the document that was put forth?
Yes, I think it is. The clerk has a copy of the full amendment that's in front of you that'll be made part of the record.
Good deal.
Or if you just want to hear John read aloud.
That's it.
I can read the whole.
No, no, no.
He can read. It was a shortcut read. I'll give you that.
Just making sure it's all taken care of, but I'm good. I can read.
Clerk can roll.
Okay. And the roll call will be on the amended language. Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Back to the ordinance as amended. Any other discussion on that? If not, court call the roll on the ordinance as amended.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
I'll record.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you very much. Want to recognize Mr. Murphy Armstrong. Just before you, just before you belatedly entered the chamber, you were named to the Springwood Cemetery Advisory Committee.
Yes, me.
You were.
Mr. Mayor, if I might take a moment, Mr. Armstrong serves as chair of that committee, and they're doing a great job looking at long-term needs for capital and for maintenance in the Springwood Cemetery, which Murphy and I have spoken with and expect to be forthcoming. But really appreciate your service on, I was going to say such a lively board, but no.
No, don't say that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
You notice all my people showed up. What's, y'all are not inviting the people. Anyway, thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it.
15A.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 0.05 acre of real property at 516 Arlington Avenue from RBB Neighborhood District to RNXB Neighborhood Flex B District.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Do you want any discussion on this? Counsel. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 14A, first reading. 14B.
Of 15B, an ordinance to annex approximately 9.81 acres of real property and 0.94 acres of adjacent right-of-way located at 100 Woodruff Industrial Lane, and to provide the zoning designation of CV Civic District.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. What triggered this one?
I have to give credit to the planning staff for approaching Piedmont Natural Gas as we were discussing with Duke Energy and other utilities. And so this was kind of cleaning up, and this is their regional operations center behind Target.
Yeah, because Duke's properties automatically with this, we had a conversation on this one, but I'm glad we did. Good, good.
It's part of the donut hole, correct?
Yeah, that's a good one, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, 14B. Clerk call the roll.
Yes, this is on 15B. Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, 15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.06 acre of real property and 0.148 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 315 South Calhoun Street, and to provide the zoning designation of RNA Neighborhood A District.
So moved, second.
Very good, yeah. A little piece of sterling.
What's on that property now, Mary Douglas?
It's vacant.
It looks like an RV.
Vacant. It is vacant.
It is, it is vacant.
It is vacant.
It is vacant, and the property will remain in the Sterling Special Emphasis neighborhood.
Yeah. Now, that's a nice one, then.
You know, this one and the next one both help us. It's so difficult with Sterling and Pleasant Valley that are split city, across city and county, very difficult for the community and very difficult for first responders. So I really appreciate staff working with those two neighborhoods to see what we can do to pull them in.
Did you call that D? Okay.
I have a motion in a second.
Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15D.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.27 acre of real property and 0.05 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 220 Plantation Road, and to provide the zoning designation of RHC House C District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. How this come about?
Well, Austin Rutherford was speaking with them about another matter, and he asked if they would be interested in connecting into the city of Greenville, that they would receive better services, and that he could do an analysis on their taxes. So he did that, and they came to us, and this will be going to the Planning Commission on May 2.
Austin's quite the salesman.
Fantastic. That's really fantastic.
Yeah, but you throw that, what they're paying taxes.
Clerk call the roll.
A lot of people just don't know.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. That completes our short agenda tonight. Mr. City Manager, you have anything further? You kept us for about two hours at workshop, so.
I'm here to talk to the folks who sit here.
Okay, all right.
First, thank you all for your purchase of the property on the agenda earlier tonight on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Those who are answering to the three parties of Greenville 2040 for purposes of both property, both of the states, and we're a rural housing, but thank you for that. I'd like to introduce him, Han Wors, with us tonight, who is his first day as CEO.
He looks shell shocked. I don't know.
Guess you all come to the tire conference tomorrow.
Oh, boy. Very good.
Yes. Also, just a reminder about the budget, and that our communications team will be doing a big splash about the budget on Sunday, when the public hearing is. We've had two great budget fellow workshops. For anyone who did not tune in earlier, we'll have the video recording up probably tomorrow, tomorrow of today's workshop. Anyone who's interested in whether we stand the budget for FY 2025 so far, and we're on a good track with that, so. But we're obviously looking for the contest in the evening, and we might proceed during the public hearing, that we'll have on May 13. Budget will be on member review. I wanted to report some parking for our Greenville public funeral. As you know, at our last meeting, our communications director, Ben Rutherford, presented the plan that had been worked on very diligently with our really brilliant skill and real foster purpose, our parking administrator for the city, trying to ensure that we're providing parking options for the community during the drive. We had over 1,100 riders during the first week at the home stand.
Wow.
Ooh. The Gabe Day South Route had 736 riders, and the Gabe Day North Route had 370. So thank you to our community, thank you to our communications team, and to our staff who worked so hard to make sure that that would happen for a successful first week. I think the drive was very happy with the numbers and the information that they saw. And we're going to try again this week, because the local home stand starts tomorrow. So we will continue to report back those numbers, and we hope to see even more of our shift. We do know that the lots on Pendleton Street in particular were a lot of usage. And that's free parking.
I think the planted security lot didn't have, it wasn't full. And I think if people learn about that, that is a great deal. So it's free parking just up Pendleton Street.
The city hall was full.
Well, that's close in, yeah, yeah.
Our cancer survivors, we're all prepared for starting, and those are underway. So we're really excited. It's a tough, a positive job we've been waiting on for quite some time. So glad to have that underway, and we hope to have a very short and a short amount of time to begin quickly. So thank you to our team for that. Our public works apparently is having a community open house Saturday, May 18, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., to showcase all the services of fellow works that provide for our community. Those are great and fun, especially if you have small children. They always like to see all of the big equipment that we have on the works department. We have all the, all the stuff. I'm sure they're going to see a great show. And then I want to talk about our last little thing, and I think communications has something to show, is that we had our U-Waste and Shredding Event this past Saturday. It was hugely successful. Our team does this, and they give up their Saturdays to do this for our community. That's our staff pictures there, and as you can see, we had 521 vehicles served during the three hour. Three a minute.
It always do, yeah.
And you can see some of the pictures from our staff team that day, and for all members of our solid waste and recycling division that are out. and for all members of our Solid Waste Recycling Division, that are out works, great photos. And then we collected over 20,000 pounds for shredding. So that's, I mean, you've got, you, I mean, I think this is a great service that we provide our community to have things that were just working in your garage, in your basement, that you need to get rid of. I think we all have them. I would encourage you to take, to take advantage of these days that we provide to our community. And so, and we build a tractor trailer with electronic waste.
Yeah, and nobody lost a ring.
No one lost a ring this weekend.
No.
Anyway, I just wanted to show.
That's great pictures, yeah. Thank you.
See, and, and how such jobs they did this past weekend. And, you know, we just have such committed staff who do a lot for us, you know, every, every day. And then you give up their weekends to provide this kind of service to our community is something that I'm really proud of, and I've served with my colleagues for the city of Greenville. Great work. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Dave here tonight. I don't, Dave, thought it worked.
They probably tired.
Okay, they gave up their weekends. I wouldn't, you know.
I just want to say one thing, that I went to the public hearing for the redoing of Church Street. You need to get that video. It is magnificent. The State Department, they ID'd themselves. It was so easy to understand. Took five minutes. It was wonderful, wonderful. And I thank y'all, and the city was there, and I made, told Clinton and I was, we make sure that we protect them when people start jumping on them, because nobody tells them about the hearing. And I'm saying, you were invited and you didn't show up. So we have nothing to say. Yeah, we thank y'all. They did a good job.
All right. Okay, thank you, council.
154.
Yeah.